Good evening, everyone. It is 5:50 on February 8th, and I'd like to call the special town council meeting to order. If we could please take a moment of silence to reflect on all those that currently serve and have in the past, enabling us to help you here and stay for an entire week. In accordance with Mass General law, tonight's meeting is being audio and video recorded, and I would ask if anyone in the audience is recording, and if so, could you please identify yourself?
I do not see anybody recording.
Thank you, Don. Tonight's meeting is being held virtually through a Zoom webinar pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Our sole agenda item this evening is to appoint the candidate to fill the town council vacancy. I would just like to state that Jeanie advertised these divisions and cutoff date, I believe, is February 3rd at 4:00 p.m. And Jeanie, do you have any letters in front of you at your room?
We only have one letter that was received before the deadline of February 3rd at 4:00.
Not to put you on the spot, do you have that letter in front of you by any chance?
I do.
Would you mind reading it?
No, not at all. Can y'all hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Dear members of the town council, I am writing this letter of interest to be considered in filling the vacant town seat on the town council. I'm a longtime resident of the town. I own a house and base my business here. I'm an active participant in our community. And let me just say, this letter is from Sidney Starks that came in January 31st. I have in the past been an elected member of the planning board, serving a full five-year term. In my tenure as chair, one of the largest and most complex projects built in town commenced. The Center Square Complex, for lack of a better description, was created. This was a unique partnership of public and private space, including new retail buildings, the town library, and town hall, all sharing parking. In addition to the usual application process and public hearings for the large-scale project, I spearheaded the implementation of roundtables for the stakeholders. This reflects my belief that communication, transparency, and participation is paramount in public service, and that an elected official serves the taxpayer's interests. More recently, I was appointed to serve on the Planning Matters Subcommittee by the town council. We created the mixed-use language for the new zoning bylaw. This involved many hours of meetings, research, compromise, and polite debate. If appointed to the town council, I will not seek election when the seat comes open, as proved the town charter in June. I believe I can hit the ground running as I follow town matters closely. I am confident that my skill set can be an asset to both the town council and the town itself. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Sid Starks.
Thanks, Jeanie.
You're welcome.
I would just like to add that I, like many of you, probably received phone calls from other residents inquiring about the appointment. And as stated in the letter, and much like Don Anderson commented when he was kind enough to step back in, Don and Sid Starks made it clear that they will not be campaigning in the spring for the election. So I believe everyone that I came in contact with is reserving their right to come out in the spring. I certainly wouldn't want to make it look like there's a lack of interest, because that's certainly not the case. So we will see names in the spring or much sooner as papers are pulled for the positions in the spring. So I want to thank Sid for stepping up, that we could certainly use the help at this point in time. But I'd like to make a motion to appoint Sid Starks to fill the town council vacancy. And for the record, the term would be commence upon swearing-in by our councillor and to expire on June 30th.
I'll make a motion to appoint Sid Starks to fill the vacancy left by the passing of Thomas O'Connor.
I'll second that.
Okay. A motion in a second.
Just for clarification purposes, according to the charter, this term, if Sid's appointed to it, and if we choose to, would be until the date of election of the new councillor, not June 30th. Whoever wins the election would start immediately and be sworn in immediately to fulfill the rest of that month or a few weeks or whatever.
Thank you. Any further instructions regarding the motion or instruction? Connor?
Thanks, Mike. Just one clarification question. It made it sound like there was phone calls from other interested residents. Did they just, by their own volition, choose not to pursue submitting a letter of interest for this position? Or is it sort of a...
The interest I had was verbal. I asked people inquiring how long the term was, what we expected for vacancies going forward. They weren't sure if this appointment carried through for the remainder of the two years after June 30th. So I gave everybody that inquired with myself a fair representation on what this appointment involved, and that's where we are. I don't know if anyone has anything else to add, or if anyone proposed any questions to other council members regarding vacancies for the term.
No, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't only advertising it for people that were only seeking it if they were choosing not to seek election in the spring.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. I'll start with myself up here in the left corner on top. I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Thank you all. I'm sure Sid will be getting in touch with Jeanie for the swearing-in, so he can start performing the Zoom that he's been elected to fill. Kathy, in regards to tonight's meeting, there is no executive session or no other agenda item, so I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
And a second discussion? Done. Ralph?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Don?
Yes, you're phasing in and out, Mike.
Okay. Maybe I can move a little closer. Is that any better?
It is.
The voice is better.
I'll have to speak louder, so. Kathy?
Yes.
And Connor?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. We are adjourning at 5:58. We'll be back for our regular meeting in approximately two minutes. Welcome back. It is now 6:03, and I'll call our regular town council meeting to order. If we could please take a moment of silence to acknowledge our military personnel, firefighters, police officers, several servants who have dedicated their lives protecting our safety, freedom, and democracy, please. Thank you all. In accordance with Mass General law, tonight's meeting is being audio and video recorded. I would ask again if anyone in the audience is recording, and if you could please identify yourself.
No, sir.
Tonight's meeting is being held virtually through a Zoom webinar pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Is everyone having a little bit easier to understand?
Yep.
Jeanie, anyone signed up for public comments?
No, they have not. No public comments.
Council comments? Then Mary, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mike. My report starts off with an acknowledgement of the vaccine clinic that was put together by Tammy Spencer and the staff at the Health Department. First, there are going to be two clinics, the first of which occurred yesterday afternoon at Berchley Park. And the attendance was in the mid-50s, but they had a number of walk-ins that were unanticipated, so they viewed that as a successful clinic. And the second one is scheduled for February 28th at the same location. I had forwarded the flyers advertising those events to you last week. The COVID case numbers in town remain high. They are declining, pardon me, from what I reported at the last meeting. However, our positivity rate is still in excess of 16%, and the mask mandate continues in effect at least until February 28th, or Board of Health action, whichever may occur, sooner. The building renovation at Senior Center for the Veterans Service Office is finally complete. DPW, through Joe Dunn's efforts, and the staff there in the Building Maintenance Department did a wonderful job. And I think the only thing that's left is the installation of the sprinkler system through the ceiling. And tomorrow, I have a meeting with the Eastern Hampton District Veterans Board to determine East Long Meadow's contribution to the budget for the Veterans District for fiscal '23. So that has all come together nicely, and I invite any and all of you to stop over at the Council on Aging Building and check out that new office, because it's a marked improvement from what existed in the past. Unfortunately, negotiations with three of our five collective bargaining units continue unresolved. I had hoped to be able to finish those matters, but the three unions of police and the two administrative unions for the town hall employees failed to ratify offers that were made. So as of today, we were able to draft a new memorandum of agreement, which is being forwarded to the town employees' unions for further review and hopefully a ratification at the next available meeting that they can have. Counsel for that union is John Connor, and many of you may know John personally. His mother passed away a couple of days ago, and her services, I believe, are today, and her funeral mass will be tomorrow. So out of respect for his family situation, that matter will be deferred at a minimum of a few additional days. The police union has been referred to mediation. I think I referenced that in the last month's meeting, and we've not yet received a date from the Division of Labor Services in Boston, but that'll be upcoming. We have been able to settle several old outstanding litigation matters in the recent past, and there are still several that are pending, that are in what I'm describing as the discovery stage, which essentially means that each side of the V has an opportunity to extract information from the other party in the lawsuit in an attempt to move the matters forward. So there are five matters pending currently against the town of East Long Meadow, and we're actively seeking progress, I should say, on all of those. The Westcom Board met on February 4th last Friday to discuss our ongoing operational and administrative issues. They are advertising for an HR service as well as a procurement official. Both matters obviously take a great deal of attention, and with what's going on in the development of the district, those are highly important positions that need attention by all the board members, who are the town managers of the five communities that are currently involved in the district. And that will be ongoing, I'm sure, for several months, if not years, to come. On the good news front, Karen Corpinan applied, as I told you last month, for that Massachusetts Gaming Commission Community Mitigation Grant, and we were advised that we received a grant approval of $100,000. I'm quite delighted about that. I expected that the contract and the funds would be forthcoming soon, and this afternoon I got the contract to review, and so I'll get that executed tomorrow and send back to Boston. So we're very, very happy about that. It will help us. It'll allow us to hire a consultant to develop a business resource portal. That was the connection that the mitigation committee found acceptable for an impact on the community that we were struggling to define in past years. So I give Karen a lot of credit for putting that together. Operating budgets have been submitted by all departments, and I expect the schools' budget shortly. We've started our capital review. I think our third meeting is coming up this week. And I mentioned in my report that it was actually Councillor Page's suggestion that there'd be like a site visit, and I think that's an excellent idea, and our capital committee will be inviting the councillors to view some of the assets that we're seeking to replace at some date in the near future, just so that you can get a bird's-eye view of the condition of some of the vehicles and get a better understanding and appreciation of the condition of some of the equipment that we're looking to upgrade. One issue that is repeatedly mentioned in the Capitol meetings we've had so far is the supply chain issues that are causing some consternation on departments that need new vehicles, namely the fire, and the police, and the DPW, for starters. Orders are, we're being told that by vendors and manufacturers, that some of these vehicles, even if they're ordered now, will not be available for 12 to 14 months, if then. So that just adds another layer of difficulty for operational purposes, but like with all things, we will certainly get through it. And lastly, according to the report, the department heads did meet last Thursday. I feel badly that we haven't been able to meet on a monthly basis, but COVID essentially prevented that over the last 18 months or so. But the meeting was casual, comfortable. Everybody was given an opportunity to express what's going on in their respective departments and share the collegiality that they are so good at. So that was a relatively brief meeting, but one that I hope, or a process that I hope we can continue on a more regular basis once COVID recedes for good. I do have a couple of additions that I failed to put in the manager's report, because they came to my attention after I submitted it. I did appoint Nick Turnberg to the Conservation Commission. I also attended an ARPA webinar last week that was held in order to describe the final rule from the Treasury Department. And the main uptake from that webinar is that now communities like East Long Meadow have a $10 million basically standard deduction. I equate it to a standard deduction on your tax return. We can use up to $10 million, or the maximum of your ARPA benefit, which in East Long Meadow's case will be roughly $2.4 million coming this calendar year, for revenue replacement without any sort of accounting or calculation. Under the interim rule, there was an option to use ARPA funding to replace town revenue that you could establish was lost due to the pandemic, starting with fiscal '19 as your baseline. So now they've done away with that calculation requirement. And so that'll be a decision that'll have to be made in the future, whether we want to continue to use the remainder of these funds that are coming to East Long Meadow for water and sewer infrastructure projects, or opt for using the balance to suffice as revenue replacement. There's also the Sessions Act of 2020, recently adopted. It was adopted January 21st of this year, passed $2.2 million for the town of East Long Meadow for the upgrade of the Westford-North Main Street and Maple Shade intersection. So I put emails out to Senator Lesser's office and to Angelo Pupolo and Brian Ash today, asking them to give us their best estimate of when those funds will be available and processed through to the municipality. Mr. Fenny is anxious to do his future planning for that work, but whenever it arrives, it's great news, and it's not less than $2.2 million. So, oh, and today, the department heads were involved in a webinar entitled "Preventing Discrimination and Harassment in the Workplace." This was initiated by Joan Iwaniki, and I'm grateful to her for making that available to everybody. It's a, as you might imagine, it's a webinar on that subject, the do's and don'ts, and it's also a key piece of our insurance coverage, because it will provide us with credits for all the department heads who've certified that they've taken the course and been made aware of these pitfalls. So that's very good news, and that'll result in a credit on our insurance policy. And also, incidentally, the discrimination and harassment were at the core of the two recent litigation matters that I reported were settled, arising from 2017 and '18. So that education experience will serve us well going forward. So that's it for tonight, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Appreciate it. Motion to approve January 11th Open Session Minutes, please.
Move to approve the January 11th, 2022 Open Session Minutes.
I'll second.
That was me. I'm sorry, I was muted. I'll second, but it's already been done.
Do have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Motion to approve January 11th Executive Session Minutes, please.
I motion to approve the January 11th, 2022 Executive Session Minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Kathy?
Abstain.
Don?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you. We have nothing under communications and correspondence that we do, so we do have a public hearing scheduled for 6:15. I'm showing 6:17. This public hearing is required for a first reading for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment regarding photomounted photovoltaic installations. Before I ask Mr. Page to do the honors, I would just like to introduce the council members. I am Mike Page. To my right is Marilyn Richard, followed by Ralph Page, Don Anderson, Connor O'Shea, and Kathy Hill. Ralph, I know I'm asking a lot, and maybe we'll have time for a beverage or a break, but do your thing, please.
So, Mike, do you want to invite George Kingston in from the planning board, just to give us a quick overview before I bore everyone and put everyone to sleep?
We could certainly do that. I don't have any objections. No one else has any issues? And I would start with, before we bring George, and I would just ask Jeanie if she could please read the legal notice into the record.
Good evening, everyone.
Standby, George, for one minute, please.
Ready?
Thank you, Jeanie.
East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 8, 2022, at 6:15 p.m. via Zoom webinar, for the purpose of amending and clarifying the town of East Long Meadow bylaws, Section 7.5, ground-mounted photovoltaic installations, and Schedule of Uses, Section 3.041, ground-mounted photovoltaic arrays, by adding language permitting ground-mounted photovoltaic installations in residence zoning districts. Information relating to this proposed bylaw is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public on the town's website. For the council, Jeanne Arcogluetti, Town Clerk, Clerk of the Council.
Thanks, Jeanie. George, thank you for joining us this evening. We appreciate any reasons or rationale for the proposed amendment. If you want to make a statement or bring us up to date on any information you have, we'll follow that by having Councillor Page read the lengthy bylaws to the record.
Thank you for inviting me. Basically, what this comes down to is the original solar bylaw did not allow solar arrays in residential areas. A company came in and wanted to put a solar array in a residentially-zoned district. They sued us. We turned them down. They sued us in land court. Land court ordered us to change our zoning bylaw, to allow it in residential areas, and that's why we're coming forward with this modification now. And basically, it does allow it in residential areas. It puts some restrictions on lot size for the different sizes of solar arrays that are allowable and require screening and other requirements. I should note that after we passed or agreed to this wording of the bylaw, we also had some corrections come in from the Building Commissioner that would put it back into line with the requirements of the various codes involved. And also, there was some ambiguity about the way it was worded, specifically with regard to what to the amount of area covered by the solar array. And my recommendation would be, based on our discussions with the planning board, that rather than saying "area under the solar array," we should say "land area occupied by solar array," which is what the intent was. So it means that the area covered by the solar cells, rather than the area of the cells themselves, which is normally larger because they're tilted. Okay? And that's basically the background. I'll, if you have any questions on that, if you have any.
Thanks, George. We appreciate that. Ralph?
If you don't mind, I've just got one question for George. With regards to this, it looks like what you're asking is for us to remove the current zoning bylaw, 7.50 photovoltaic arrays, and replace it with the document that you've provided.
That's correct, and obviously numbering needs to be adjusted to the new proposals that you have for incorporating zoning into the general bylaws, but I ask you to not worry about the numbering. You can do that administratively, I think.
Mike, you want me to start it?
Now's as good a time as any.
Okay, please, everyone, pull up a pillow. We have quite the document in front of us to read, and it is going to take me a bit. So the first thing I'm going to start with is the memo that we received from Bethany Yao, the Planning and Community Development Director. It was dated December 22nd, 2021, regards to ZN 2021-03, Ground-Mounted Photovoltaic Installations Bylaw Amendment. At the December 21st, 2021, public hearing of the planning board, the planning board voted unanimously to submit the draft Ground-Mounted Photovoltaic Installations Bylaw Amendment to the town council. The vote carried as follows. Case number 2021-03, Ground-Mounted Photovoltaic Installations Bylaw Amendment, for the purpose of amending and clarifying the town of East Long Meadow zoning bylaw, Section 7.5, Ground-Mounted Photovoltaic Installations, and Schedule of Use, Section 3.041, Ground-Mounted Photovoltaic Arrays, by adding language permitting ground-mounted photovoltaic installations in resident zoning districts. Petitioner, the East Long Meadow Planning Board. The motion to recommend the draft Ground-Mounted Photovoltaic Installations Bylaw Amendment with additional language requiring a visual buffer for small-scale solar arrays to the town council for review, made by Board Member Pete Punderson, second by Clerk Jonathan Torsa, and approved... second by Clerk Jonathan Torsa, and approved by a vote of 5-0. And we will start with the entire draft. So Section 7.5, Ground-Mounted Photovoltaic Installations. 7.5.1 Purpose. The purpose of this bylaw is to promote the creation of new ground-mounted photovoltaic installations by providing standards for the placement, design, construction, operation, monitoring, modification, and removal of such installations that address public safety, minimize impacts on scenic, natural, and historic resources, and to provide adequate financial assurance for the eventual decommissioning of such installations. The provisions set forth in this section shall specifically apply to the location, removal, and modifications of all ground-mounted photovoltaic installations. In the event that conflicts may appear in other sections of the zoning bylaws for the town of East Long Meadow, the criteria set forth in this section, 7.5, take precedence. Medium and large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations shall be subject to site plan review as specified in Section 7.4 of the zoning bylaws for the town of East Long Meadow, and in accordance with additional requirements specified herein. 7.5.1.2, accessory use. If installed in a residential district, all ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations shall be considered an accessory structure to the principal use and must adhere to the setbacks specified in Section 3.314 of the zoning bylaws for the town of East Long Meadow. All ground-mounted solar energy systems in residential districts shall be installed either in the side yard or rear yard to the extent practicable. Small-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations must adhere to the following design and operation standards. A, utility notification. No grid intertie photovoltaic system shall be installed until evidence has been given to the site plan review authority that the owner has submitted notification to the utility company of the customer's intent to install an interconnected, customer-owned generator. Off-grid systems are exempt from this requirement. B, compliance with laws, bylaws, and regulations. The construction and operation of all ground-mounted photovoltaic installations shall be consistent with all applicable local, state, and federal requirements, including but not limited to all applicable safety, construction, electrical, and communications requirements. C, building permit and inspection. No photovoltaic installation shall be constructed, installed, or modified as provided in this section without first obtaining a building permit from the building commissioner. D, visual impacts and glare. At minimum, vegetative buffers must be added to screen the length of a solar energy system and 50% of the total height. The solar energy system, including all accessory and pertinent structures, shall be designed to minimize visual impacts, including preserving natural vegetation to the maximum extent possible, blending in equipment with the surroundings and adding vegetative buffers to provide an effective visual barrier from adjacent roads and screen abutting residential properties. Regardless of development status, sighting shall be such that the view of the solar energy system from locations off-site shall be minimal. 7.5.2, applicability. This section applies to all ground-mounted photovoltaic installations proposed to be constructed after the effective date of this section. This section also pertains to physical modifications that materially alter the type, configuration, or size of these installations or related equipment. Projects cannot be prohibited, but can be reasonably be reasonably regulated by the planning board for the purpose of zoning conformity and the health and safety of the public. 7.5.3, definitions. As-of-right sighting. As-of-right sighting shall mean the ground-mounted photovoltaic installations may proceed without the need for a special permit or variance in the area so designated by Table 3-1 of the Schedule of Use Regulations. Ground-mounted photovoltaic installation. A photovoltaic system that is a structurally mounted on the ground and is not mounted on a roof or other previously existing structure. On-site photovoltaic installation. A photovoltaic installation that is constructed at a location where other uses of the underlying property occur. Photovoltaic, parentheses PV, is a method of generating electrical power by converting solar radiation into direct current electricity using semiconductors that exhibit the photovoltaic effect. Photovoltaic power generation employs solar panels composed of a number of solar cells containing a photovoltaic material. Materials presently used for photovoltaics include monocrystalline silicon, polycrystalline silicon, amorphous silicon, cadmium telleride, and copper indium gallium sulfide. Okay, rated nameplate capacity. The maximum rated output of electric power production of the commercial solar photovoltaic installation in direct current DC. Solar energy. Radiant energy received from the sun that can be collected in the form of heat or light by solar energy system. Solar photovoltaic installation. A solar energy system that converts solar energy directly into electricity through an arrangement of solar photovoltaic panels. Roof-mounted solar photovoltaic installation. A solar photovoltaic system that is structurally mounted to the roof of a structure. Small-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation. A ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation that occupies 2,100 square feet or less of surface area of solar panels. Medium-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation. A ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation that occupies more than 2,100 but less than 32,000 square feet of surface area of solar panels. Large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation. A ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation that occupies 32,000 square feet or more of surface area of solar panels. Photovoltaic array. See ground-mounted photovoltaic installations. Zoning enforcement authority. The building commissioner is charged with enforcing all zoning bylaws of East Long Meadow. Site plan approval authority, the planning board. 7.5.4, general requirements for all power generation installations. The following requirements relate to medium and large-scale ground-mounted photovoltaic installations. 7.5.5, compliance with laws, bylaws, and regulations. The construction and operation of medium or large-scale ground-mounted photovoltaic installations shall be consistent with all applicable local, state, and federal requirements, including but not limited to all applicable safety, construction, electrical, and communications requirements. All buildings and fixtures forming part of a photovoltaic installation shall be constructed in accordance with the specific criteria set forth herein. 7.5.6, building permit and building inspection. No medium or large-scale ground-mounted photovoltaic installation shall be constructed, installed, or modified as provided in this section without first obtaining a building permit after approval of the planning board. 7.5.7, fees. The application for a site plan review for a medium or large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation must be accompanied by the fee required for said site plan review. 7.5.8, site plan review and approval. Medium and large-scale ground-mounted photovoltaic installation shall undergo site plan review and approval by the planning board as specifically stated in the zoning bylaws prior to construction, installation, or modification as provided in this section. 7.5.9, plans and maps. All plans and maps shall be prepared, stamped, and signed by a registered professional engineer licensed to practice in Massachusetts. Required documents. Pursuant to the site plan review process as set forth in Section 7.4 of the zoning bylaws, the project proponent shall provide the following documents. A, a site plan shall be prepared by a registered professional engineer and/or a registered land surveyor at a scale of 1 inch equals 20 feet or such scale as may be approved by the planning board on a standard 24-inch by 36-inch sheets in continuation on 8 1/2-inch by 11-inch sheets necessary for narrative. The site plan shall include: 1, name and address of project, locus, boundaries, date and scale of plan. 2, name and address of the record owner, developer, and seal of engineer or surveyor. 3, names and addresses of all record owners within 300 feet of the property lines. 4, all existing lot lines, easements, rights of way, size in acres or square feet, budding land uses, and location and use of structures within 300 feet of the site. 5, property lines and physical features, including roads, characteristics of vegetation, trees mature, old growth, shrubs, open field, et cetera, wetlands, streams, ledge for the project site. 6, proposed changes to the landscape of the site, grading, vegetation clearing, and planting, driveways, snow storage, exterior lighting, screening vegetation, or structures in stormwater management systems, including total acreage of disturbed area, portal vegetation cleared, not including mowed fields. 7, location and details of all security measures for the site. 8, location of all existing and proposed roads, both public and private on the site. 9, location of existing structures on the site. 10, location of the ground-mounted photovoltaic installation, type of mounting devices, access roads, lighting, ground equipment, fencing, electrical infrastructure, and associated equipment. 11, plans for accessory buildings or other structures and locations and details of all planned security measures. 12, all existing overhauled utility lines, if applicable. 13, blueprints or drawings of a photovoltaic installation signed by a registered professional engineer licensed to practice in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts showing the proposed layout of the system and any potential shading from nearby structures. 14, one- or three-line electrical diagrams detailing the photovoltaic installation, associated components, and electrical interconnection methods with all National Electrical Code compliant disconnects and overcurrent devices. 15, documentation of the major system components to be used, including the PV panels, mounting system, and inverter. 16, name, address, and contact information for proposed system installer. 17, name, address, phone number, and signature of the project proponent, as well as all co-proponents or property owners, if any, and 18, the name, contact information, and signature of any agents representing the project proponent. 19, trees with a DBH of 20 inches or greater within project parcel or parcels shall be identified to determine tree loss, along with inventorying of diseased or hazard trees slated to be removed due to proposed development. Documentation establishing legal access and control of the project site. The project proponent shall submit documentation of actual or prospective ownership, access and control of the project site sufficient to allow for construction and operation of the proposed photovoltaic installation to the planning board and the building commissioner. B, operation and maintenance plan. The project proponent shall submit a plan to the planning board for the operation and maintenance of the ground-mounted photovoltaic installation, which shall include measures for maintaining safe access to the installation, stormwater controls, as well as general procedures for operational maintenance of the installation. C, zoning district designation for the parcel or parcels of land comprising the project site. Submission of a copy of a zoning map with the parcel or parcels identified is suitable for this purpose. D, description of financial certainty that satisfies Section 7.5.19.3. E, proof of liability insurance. F, pre-constructions photo from the right of way and nearest abutters. These photos should include tree coverage. G, zoning district designation for the parcel or parcels of land comprising the project. H, visualization of post-construction solar development, including perspectives from right of way or ways nearest abutting properties or residential structures in tree coverage. The planning board may hire, at the expense of the applicant, consultants to review the plan submitted if it determines independent expert review is appropriate for the interest of the neighborhood and/or the community. In such event, the planning board shall select an expert to perform the review. The applicant shall pay the estimated cost and said expert to the town treasurer prior to any review being undertaken. No site plan shall be approved until the total cost of said review has been paid by the applicant. The planning board may waive the submittal of various required documents for cause established in the site plan review record and its written finding that the documents are not necessary for the board to perform the review set forth herein. 7.5.10, utility notification. No grid intertie photovoltaic system shall be constructed until written evidence has been given to the planning board that the utility company that operates the electrical grid where the installation is to be located has been informed of the photovoltaic installation owner or operators intent to install an interconnected customer-owned generator. Off-grid systems are exempt from this requirement. 7.5.11, pollinator-friendly certification. No large-scale solar photovoltaic installation shall be constructed until proof has been given to the site plan approval authority that the project proponent has obtained pollinator-friendly certification for the solar photovoltaic installation through the UMass Clean Energy Extension Pollinator-Friendly Certification Program at a minimum of the Silver Certification Level or other equivalent certification as determined by the site plan approval authority. This certification must be maintained throughout the life of the installation. We're getting there. Seven point five point twelve, area dimension and density requirements. A, medium scale, ground mounted, solar photovoltaic installation shall be no less than two thousand one hundred and no more than thirty-two thousand square feet of surface area of solar panels. Installation within the commercial, business, and residence districts shall be roof mounted, parking canopy, or ground mounted as ancillary use to an allowable use only. B, large scale, ground mounted, solar photovoltaic installation shall be thirty-two thousand square feet or more of surface area of solar panels. Installations within the commercial, business, and residence districts shall be roof mounted, parking canopy, or ground mounted as ancillary use to an allowable use only. Setbacks, medium and large scale, ground mounted, solar photovoltaic installations, front, side, and rear setbacks shall be as follows. A, front yard. The front yard shall have a depth that is consistent with the existing requirements of the district where it is located. B, side yard. Each side yard shall have a depth that is consistent with the existing requirements of the district where it is located. Unless said site abuts a residential district or a residence. Where such a lot abuts a residential district or a residence, the side yard shall not be less than fifty feet. See also section seven point five point thirteen buffer strips. C, rear yard. Each rear yard shall have a depth that is consistent with the existing requirements of the district where it is located. Where such a lot abuts a residential district or a residence, rear yard shall not be less than fifty feet. See also section seven point five point thirteen buffer strips. Lot coverage. Lot coverage shall be the same as allowed in the district in which it is to be located. Seven point five point thirteen buffer strips. One, for medium, large scale, ground mounted, solar photovoltaic installations abutting a residential district or a residence. The fifty foot setback for either side or rear yards shall consist of twenty-five, twenty-five feet of a landscaped buffer. Said buffer is to consist of plantings a minimum of six feet in height, a planting and staggered so as to fill that twenty-five foot buffer area and keep the arrays from view year round. Two, every abutting property shall be visually screened from the project area through any one of the combination of the following. Location, distance, plantings, existing vegetation, and fencing, not to exceed six feet in height. Height, the height must be measured by the elevation of the landscape, and no mounds will be allowed to change that elevation other than those allowed for the planting of trees in the buffer strip. For all ground mounted photovoltaic installations abutting a residential district or a residence, the height will be limited to fifteen feet. For all other ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations, the height will be limited to twenty-five feet. Seven point five point fourteen, appurtenant structures. All appurtenant structures to medium and large scale ground mounted photovoltaic installations shall be subject to the accessory regulations concerning the bulk and height of structures, lot area, setbacks, open space, parking and building coverage requirements for the district in which it is to be located. All such appurtenant structures, including but not limited to equipment shelters, storage facilities, transformers, and substations, shall be architecturally compatible with each other. Structures should be shaded from view by vegetation and or joined or clustered to avoid adverse visual impacts and meet the zoning setback requirements of the specific district in which said structure is to be located. All appurtenant structures are to be located within the setback requirements of the district in which the project is proposed. Seven point five point fifteen, design and performance standards. Seven point five point fourteen point one, lighting. Lighting of photovoltaic installations shall comply with applicable laws. Lighting of other parts of the installation, such as appurtenant structures, shall be limited to that required for safety and operational purposes, and shall be shielded from abutting properties. Lighting of the photovoltaic installation shall be directed downward and shall incorporate full cutoff fixtures to reduce light pollution and shall not shine on abutting property. Any lighting on the site will require a submittal of a lighting plan and written approval from the planning board with the recommendations from the fire and police departments. Seven point five point fourteen point two, signage. Signs on all ground mounted photovoltaic installations shall identify the owner and provide a twenty-four hour emergency contact phone number. Said signage shall not exceed six square feet and shall be visible at all times. Photovoltaic installations shall not be used for displaying in it, for displaying any advertising except for identification of the operator or responsible person of a solar photovoltaic installation. Seven point five point fourteen point three, utility connections. All utility connections from the photovoltaic installations shall be placed underground. However, depending on appropriate soil conditions, shape, and topography of the site, and any requirements of the utility provider, the applicant may seek relief from this requirement from the planning board. Electrical transformers for utility inter to, interconnections may be above ground if required by the utility provider. However, placement on the site must be approved as part of an existing standard procedures. Seven point five point fourteen point four, roads. Access roads shall be constructed to minimize grading, removal of stone walls, or street trees, and minimize impacts to environmental or historical resources, or historic resources. Seven point five point eighteen point five, hazardous materials. Hazardous materials stored, used, or generated onsite shall not exceed the amount for a very small quantity generator of hazardous waste as defined by the DEP pursuant to Mass DEP Regulations three ten CMR thirty point zero zero zero, or any amendment or replacement, and shall meet all requirements of the DEP, including storage of hazardous materials in a building with an impervious floor that is not adjacent to any floor drains to prevent discharge to the outdoor environment. If hazardous materials are utilized within the solar electric equipment, then impervious containment areas capable of controlling any release to the environment and to prevent potential contamination of groundwater are required. A full inspection report establishing compliance prepared by the fire department will be required before the site plan can be approved. Seven point five point eighteen point six, noise. Sound or noise levels may not exceed fifty dB A at the boundary of the property. Seven point five point eighteen point seven, daytime visual distraction. All ground mounted photovoltaic installations must be positioned to minimize glare on any residence or public way, and must not create a visual obstruction on a public roadway, such as blocking intersections or creating blind curves. The applicant should submit a ratings and technical specifications for the solar panels to ensure minimum reflectivity. Seven point five point fifteen, safety and environmental standards. Seven point five point fifteen point one, emergency services. The ground mounted photovoltaic installation owner or operator shall provide a copy of the project summary, electrical schematic, and site plan to the East Long Meadow Fire Chief. Upon request from the East Long Meadow Fire Chief, the owner or operator shall cooperate with local emergency services in developing an emergency response plan and provide a copy to the fire department. All means of shutting down the photovoltaic installation shall be clearly marked. The owner or operator shall identify a responsible person for public inquiries throughout the life of the installation. Seven point five point fifteen point two, land clearing, soil erosion, and habitat impacts. Clearing of natural vegetation shall be limited to what is necessary for the construction, operation, and maintenance of the ground mounted photovoltaic installation or otherwise prescribed by applicable laws, regulations, and bylaws, including any requirements of the Conservation Commission. Seven point five point fifteen point three, fencing. A chain link fence, no more than one quarter solid, shall be installed around the installation at the setback line with a gate that is locked at all times. Which lock is to be approved by the fire department. The fire and police departments shall have twenty-four hour access to the site. The fence shall be at least six inches above the ground to allow for wa- wildlife crossing under fence. Seven point five point fifteen point four, fencing. There shall be a fence built surrounding the solar array and ancillary equipment. The fence shall be knuckled, salvaged, chain link fence, unless determined otherwise by the site plan approval authority. There shall be a gap along the bottom of the fence that complies with UMass Clean Energy Extension Pollinator Friendly Certification Program standards in order to allow for wildlife crossing under fence. Seven point five point sixteen, monitoring maintenance. Seven point five point sixteen point one, photovoltaic installation conditions. The ground mounted photovoltaic installation owner or operator shall maintain the facility in good condition. Maintenance shall include, but not be limited to, painting, structural repairs, and integrity of security measures. Site access shall be maintained as required by the zoning bylaw and applicable laws. The owner or operator shall be responsible for the cost of maintaining the photovoltaic installation, any access road or roads, and ground maintenance. Seven point five point eighteen point two, modifications. No building permit for modifications to a medium or large scale ground mounted photovoltaic installation shall be issued after the issuance of the initial building permit, unless an amended site plan for said modification has been approved by the planning board. Seven point five point sixteen point two, annual reporting. The owner or operator of the installation shall submit an annual report which certifies compliance with the requirements of this bylaw in their approved site plan, including control of vegetation, noise standards, and adequacy of road access. The annual report shall also provide information on the maintenance completed during the course of the year and the amount of electricity generated by the facility. The reports shall be submitted to the planning board, fire chief, emergency management director, building commissioner, and conservation commission, if wetlands permit was issued. No later than forty-five days after the end of the calendar year. Failure to provide such an annual report will result in a fine of one hundred dollars per day until said report is received. Seven point five point seventeen, abandonment and decommissioning. Seven point five point seventeen point one, removal requirements. Any ground mounted photovoltaic installation which has reached the end of its useful life or has been abandoned consistent with section seven point five point nineteen point two of this bylaw shall be removed. The owner or operator shall physically remove the installation no more than ninety days after the date of discontinued operations or determination of the building commissioner that the installation is not being actively used for meaningful photovoltaic generation. The owner or operator shall notify the building commissioner with a copy to the planning board by certified mail of the proposed date of discontinued operations and plans for removal. Decommissioning shall consist of, A, physical removal of all ground mounted photovoltaic installations, structures, equipment, security barriers, and transmission lines from the site. B, disposal of all solid and hazardous waste in accordance with local, state, and federal waste disposal reg- regulations. C, stabilization or revegetation of the site as necessary to minimize erosion. The building commissioner may allow the owner or operator to leave landscaping or designated below grade foundations in order to minimize erosion and disruption to vegetation. Seven point five point seventeen point two, abandonment. Absent notice of a proposed date of decommissioning or written notice of extenuating circumstances, the photovoltaic installation shall be considered abandoned when it fails to operate for more than six months without the written consent of the planning board. If the owner or operator of the ground mounted photovoltaic installation fails to remove the installation in accordance with the requirements of this section within ninety days of the abandonment or the proposed date of decommissioning, the town may seek an order from an appropriate court to enter the property and physically remove the installation at a cost to the owner or operator of the installation and use the bond money being held and or place a municipal charges lien on the property for the costs of removal, site restoration, and all other related costs, including attorney fees if not covered by the cash bond being held by the town. Seven point five point seventeen point three, financial certainty. Prior to any construction, petitioners of large scale ground mounted photovoltaic projects shall provide certainty in a cash bond to cover the cost of removal in the event the town must remove the installation and remediate the landscape in an amount to be determined to be reasonable by the planning board, but in no event to exceed more than one hundred and twenty-five percent of the cost of removal in compliance with the additional requirements set forth herein as agreed upon by the project proponent and the planning board or its agents. Such certainty will not be required for municipally or state owned facilities. The project proponent shall submit a fully inclusive estimate of the costs associated with removal prepared by a qualified engineer, which estimate must be reviewed and approved by the planning board or its agent. The amount shall include a mechanism for calculating increased removal costs due to inflation. Okay, um, then the next is we have table three dash one, schedule of uses under section, uh, three point zero four. Ground mounted photovoltaic arrays. Um, under residential double A, we are changing the letter N to the letter Y. Under residence A, we are changing N to Y. Under residence B, we are changing N to Y. Under C, we're changing N to Y. Uh, ER is remaining N. Um, COM, which is commercial, is being changed from N to Y. Uh, the business zone, BUS, is being changed from N to Y. Um, industrial is staying a Y. Industrial garden park, IGP, is staying a Y. GR is staying an N, PUR is an N, and PAR is an N. And then the only other thing that I see is a couple of emails which George had mentioned. from Kevin Duquette. But I didn't see, there's a draft corrections PDF, and that was not supplied to us. Mike, I think that's it. Unless you want to start over again.
Your conversation was approximately forty minutes long. Congratulations, you just broke every record for a bylaw document. You are hereby excused from any and all council buildings and remainder of this meeting. Thanks, Ralph. On a more serious note, I know that you spent a minimum of six hours today reviewing the contents of the documents and being able to present as you did, so thank you from all of us. At this time, I'd like to open up this public hearing for public comment. I'll ask Don Mackey if he sees anyone in the audience. If they do, we'll bring them in.
I don't see anybody with a hand up, Mike.
Okay, so at this point of our hearing, we will close the public input of the portion of this meeting. And I'll open it up for council comments, followed by your motion. Comments from anyone, suggestions? Ralph, before you lose your lungs?
No, actually, I saw Marilyn's hand go up, and she's probably gonna make some of the same comments I have, so.
So are you giving me the floor?
I am relinquishing the floor to you, Marilyn, if that's okay with our chairman.
Is it okay, Mike?
It is, thanks.
Thank you. I'd like to ask George a question, please. George, in the bylaw, it references lot coverage. Does that imply that in a residential zone where the requirement for that district is twenty-five percent lot coverage, that these, any solar project needs to fit that requirement?
That is the intent, okay, that it would fit the overall lot coverage requirement as it would with any other ancillary structure on the, on the site. So for instance, garages and so on, this would be equivalent to that. If I may, Mr. Chairman, just make two quick comments. One is my thanks go out to Beth- Bethany Yell for finalizing this document. And I also want to mention that this is based on a best practices document that was developed by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, largely as a result of the lawsuit that we were working against. They convened a panel and put together a boilerplate, if you will, or best practices by law, and this is based on that, which Bethany adapted to our town. And that's why there's all this complicated stuff in there, because they try to cover every possible contingency.
Thanks, George. Did there are any other? Ralph?
So, George, I noticed when I went through like under section seven point five point nine, plans and maps, it requires a registered professional engineer to create all plans and maps. But on the very next, under required documents, under A, it gives you the option to use a registered land surveyor. Now, I know that's not new language. I know that's existing language that we have, but I think that's a contradiction that we should really fix. And...
I would approve that. I'm not sure how that slipped through. And I would leave it to the council to decide which way they want to go, whether they want to leave it with a land surveyor or to require a professional engineer. In this case, because of the complexity, I mean, normally for a site plan, a land surveyor is sufficient because it's a site plan. But here, there's a lot more going into it with regard to the electricals, everything else. But I would obviously leave it to the council to decide how they want to modify that.
And, Mike, if I can just follow up. So, obviously, I told you today, and I'll tell the rest of the board that I've spent a lot of time. I've noticed some other areas that refer to, like one here says "certainty that satisfies section seven point five point nineteen point three", except for the fact that that section doesn't exist. I'm assuming it's in a different location. So there's a few areas in here that, that send you to other locations, but it just send, doesn't send you to the right spot. So I think it's little things like that that we have to look at and correct. I don't think it's anything super major. I notice a lot of areas, we'll talk about solar photovoltaic. And then in the next paragraph, the word solar is not included, it just says photovoltaic installation. And I'd just like to see us clean it up a little bit so that whatever referred to is just consistent throughout the whole document. Thank you.
Marilyn?
If I may, through the chair, Ralph, I figured out that the number you just mentioned, seven point five point nineteen point two, that doesn't exist or it exists someplace else. It's the paragraph below, it's a typo, it should be seven point five point seventeen point two. So it was just a simple mistake. Anyway, I would also like to, to mention, we have three types of solar projects, small, medium, and large. Small, as I understand it, George, is under a building permit with the building commissioner. It's not under site plan review. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, you did. And this was specifically designed for homeowners who want to have a solar ground-mounted array versus on their roof or in addition to on their roof.
If I may, there are four, four criteria that are listed under small-scale ground-mounted. Utility, compliance with laws, building permit, and visual impacts. Is a residential project required to be fenced in?
Under the, according to the building commissioner, under the state code, any photovoltaic system needs to be fenced in, okay? We added to that the requirement for landscaping because fencing can be, well, drive out to Hamden on Mill Road and see what fencing can look like, okay? Again, that's something that you might reconsider. If it's good-looking fencing, they may not need landscaping. But we put that in there, leave it to the council to decide whether they want to keep it that way.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Ralph, we had a conversation earlier about our, our planning matters subcommittee, about maybe giving them a look at that. That's still on the table.
So, Mike, typically, when any matter with regards to a zoning bylaw came in front of the council, we sent it to the subcommittee with notes from like Kevin Duquette, who has made some suggestions with myself, with Marilyn, whatever suggestions here to try and recompile it a little bit based on the suggestions that we've seen. I, I would highly recommend that we do that. Like I said, if nothing else, it's gonna be to put the numbering in correct order because by the time this passes, I believe E-code will have been voted on, and it's gonna change all the numbering completely, so it, it may be to compile it and do everything at the same time.
Thanks, Ralph. Don?
One little technical glitch with the planning matter subcommittee. Every single member with the appointment of SED is now a town councillor. So we're, we have a little issue with that, so that's gonna have, so I may, we may want to find another venue and reformulate the committee, but at this point, we have a full house of councillors making up the subcommittee.
We definitely have to need a rebuild on the subcommittee before they would entertain any project subject. Any other comments at this point? I believe we have direction, now we're entertaining motion to continue.
I move to continue the public hearing to address the proposal of amending and clarifying the Town of East Long Meadow bylaws, section seven point five, ground-mounted photovoltaic installations, and schedule of uses, section three point zero four one, ground-mounted photovoltaic arrays, for a second reading to March eighth, twenty twenty-two, at six fifteen PM.
Second. A motion, second in further discussion, Ralph.
So, Mike, if we choose to also send this to the subcommittee, I don't think March eighth will give us enough time to look at it, make our recommendations, and then come back for a second reading. Is there any way to, instead of doing it on March eighth, that we do it in our April meeting?
I would agree on that because we just talked about we need a rebuild for that committee, that's gonna take a little bit of time. And if I look ahead here, I believe April twelfth, if we could reschedule for that if that's the council.
I'm losing your voice, Mike. I heard April twelfth and that.
I would ask, I would ask Marilyn if she would want to amend the March eighth date to April twelfth, which would be the first week in April, which would give us time to reconstruct the planning sub-matters committee to look at everything that we want them to view prior to our next public hearing.
I will make that motion that we amend the next hearing date from March eighth, twenty twenty-two, to April twelfth, twenty twenty-two, at six fifteen PM.
Thank you. And the second on that motion, is that by Connor?
Yeah.
So we amended the motion. And a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I'll start with myself. I'm a yes, Marilyn.
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Great, thank you all for your help with that. Ralph, again, thank you for all the time you spend.
So, Mike, do we, do we need a motion to send this to the planning matters subcommittee? And knowing that, obviously, yourself as president is the one that compiles who the subcommittee, who will be on it? And again, that's open to the councillors, I'm, I'm just asking if we have to refer it to the subcommittee for a review.
I don't know if a motion's in order, but it certainly, it certainly can't hurt anything as a safety net. So would you be kind enough to make that motion?
Mike, I make a motion that we refer this bylaw to the planning matters subcommittee.
We have a second, and a second from Marilyn. Thank you. I don't believe there's any discussion regarding that, so Marilyn?
I, I would like to say that if, depending on, if I'm on the committee, I would like to invite someone from the planning board to join us in that process if we can, simply because there's a lot of history in this document. I don't want to reinvent the wheel, I don't want to rewrite the document, I just want to make a few corrections, so.
If someone from the planning board is willing to serve on that committee, that's something we'll work on, and having them join that committee would be a very positive result for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor, I'm a yes for that, Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Thank you. Under licensing matters, motion to approve a one-day liquor license?
I move to approve a one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple, forty-three Chestnut Street, on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, from three to eight PM for the purpose of a birthday party.
I second the motion.
Motion and a second, discussion, Janie?
I just wanted to make a note that at the time this document was given to the council, we hadn't gotten all the approvals from the departments, but since then, we do have all the approvals from fire, police, health, and building.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Motion and second, any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Kathy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Under financial matters, we have a financial report, we have our director of finance in the audience with us this evening. Steve, if you want to open up that dialogue?
Sure, thank you, councillor. Good evening, councillor Page, yeoman's work, that was really well done. The, the financial report's fairly quick, and then we'll get into the subsections underneath there. We're pretty busy, even though it's a short report, we, we're going through, we're, the FY twenty-three budget's moving along. The department heads have turned in their budgets, we're going through them right now. We'll be calling them in to kind of go through with a few, with whoever we deem, you know, that needs coming to explain whatever they're asking for. Then we'll go and have it ready to present for the, for the town manager to present to the council. The, in addition to that, we, it was the end of year, so we got ten ninety-nines W, and W two's out. We had to come out by the end of January, which we did. The treasure collector part, department, in addition to going out to debt and going out to get bond, they were also busy with the third quarter actual bill. And they, and collecting, and they had much more foot traffic in town hall this time than they've had in recent memory due to the pandemic. It was also, February first is also the due date for filing an abatement, so our testers' office was somewhat busy. And then we also got the audit, draft audit management letter. I should mention with treasure collector, accounting, and assessors, during this busy time, they were all short-staffed by at least one person throughout it, and they, they were able to keep it going without any real interruption in service, so I just want to congratulate them and to thank them for all the work they do. And as far as that goes, we can move on, the twenty-three budget, as I said, is on schedule. We're just pulling it together to formalize it, get you a nice package, and to go through it with the town manager and the department head says we need to. And then we can move on to subsections, councillor, if you like. Should I go on?
He's muted.
Mike, you're muted.
Can't hear you.
You're muted, no.
Okay.
Please, please, continue.
Okay. One of the things we did as part of the going out to debt is we had a ratings call with Standards and Poor. I cannot say how pleased I am with this report. I gave you, I included a copy of the report with my package, but the general justice, due to strong local economy, strong management, good financial policies, strong budgetary performance, liquidity, and a strong debt and contingent liability profile, we maintained our double A plus stable. A lot of communities actually have gone down still, the outlook maybe, or gone down in the, the actual rating. One thing they did mention as a credit weakness was the OPEB and pension. Right now, Hampton County is roughly fifty percent funded, which isn't bad, it's just not where they want us to be. And then our OPEB liability is also, is there and it's getting bigger. To be honest with you, we're better than a lot of communities, I believe we're about fifteen percent funded of the OPEB liability. And we are currently have outstanding liability of roughly fifty-six point eight million dollars. But we have ten million dollars in the fund, one of the things the ratings agency did mention is that we do aggressively fund the liability. They applaud that. Their, one thing they're looking for is some sort of plan as to make it every year, and their, and that will help us with our discount rate, which is basically what they think we'll get for a return, and that determines our liability when we get an actual review of it all. So that's the big part of that rating agency. I think we should be proud of it, and I think it's a, it's a good rating. Once we get a better handle, and believe me, we're better than most, I think, in the state, we'll, we have a chance to bring it up to AAA, which is the highest. state, we'll, we have a chance to bring it up to AAA, which is the highest. So, we're one below the highest ranking for ratings. And as a result of that, our net interest income in the, I sent the press release also. We got a great rate on our, our bonding. We got, for the long-term bond, it was 1.747 for net, our net interest, and for the band, it's .58. So, now the band will roll over, and next year, we'll look at, we'll funding that and into a long-term debt, depending on how school feasibility study goes, and whether or not we're proceeding forward with anything for the schools. So, that's the Standard and Poor's report. Any questions? So far?
No, Counselor. I told you, Steve, I went through this in depth. I'm just curious, our liability right now for the OPEB is roughly $66 million. And we know generally each year how much that goes up? Because I'm assuming as people retire or whatever, our liability's going higher and higher each year?
A lot, a lot of things affected, yes. It's hard to predict exactly, it'll go up 10% each year. It's lots based on the actuarial. We use an actuarial review, which we do every two years, and based on that, they determine the discount rate, and the discount rate is what determines what they perceive we're going to get for a return on our investment. So, the higher the discount rate, the better it is. And the lower, it's not good. Your favorite, GAZB 75, that we were talking about earlier, because of the way they debt, it dropped from a aggressive 6.75% to a 5.25%. So, that causes the liability to go up also. And so, we, based on that, healthcare costs, that determines it each year, but we're consistent, and we've got a great investment for the OPEB trust, so we've been kind of balancing it out a little bit.
So, Steve, I'm, just a follow-up. So, if, right now, if we took this at 66 million, we have roughly 10 million in there, so we have 56 million outstanding. So, if we had $56 million when we put it in, we would be at 100% funded. Are there any communities at all that are even close to 100%? Or is a 50% a normal number? I mean, is there something that we should shoot for?
We, well, I mean, we shoot for 100%, you know, obviously, but there's not any community I know of that's 100% funded for the OPEB. In fact, we're in probably one of the higher ends of what's funded, I would say. There are some that have millions, if not more, dollars of a liability, and some people, some towns try to address it, others are kind of kicking it down the can down the road and thinking, you know, they'll put a little bit, a nominal amount each year into it. Eastlaw Meadow's been very aggressive of putting in, when we have a surplus, put like, what's coming up soon, putting a large amount of money in to lower the amount that's the liability. So, we should shoot for as much as we can really afford, and if we have extra, put it in.
I mean, I'm just looking, going, a million dollars a year, if we could invest that into it, would be great, but even at that rate, it's still 56 years before, and that's assuming that our, doesn't go up at all, so.
Yeah, and we're hoping.
It looks like, to me, it's one of those numbers that is never going to be achievable, but that you keep trying so that you get closer, hopefully.
Yeah, and I, whether it's achievable, yeah, you're right. It's going to be, if it is, it'll be, you know, if we hit the $340 million lottery, then we can, we can do it. But what we strive for is to show, and what the ratings agency really look for is, do you have a plan in place? Are you at least trying to do this? As I said, a lot of towns and municipalities will put, open a trust, put some nominal amounts of money, and then say, okay, let the investments go. Investments, and as I said, our, last year, our investments on the OPEB trust was a little over $3 million that we made on that. Something like that helps out too. So, yeah, but yeah, it's going to be a while before we're fully funded, I think.
Thank you, Mike, I appreciate it.
Thank you, and thanks for the, all the answers, Steve. Okay, the next subject matter will be to approve funds from the Historical Trust. So, I'll entertain a motion regarding that.
I make a motion to approve $709 from the Historical Trust Funds for emergency service repairs to the furnace at the Historical Commission Headquarters.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussions? Ralph?
So, Mike, if I remember right, this is the Little Historical Museum. This is a town-owned building, and I'm just curious why we have to take it out of the historical fund. Typically, most buildings within the town, if there's any service or whatever, is, is paid for out of the budget or whatever. And I was just wondering if I could get an explanation as far as, I mean, is this normal? Is it not? I, I don't know if we've really ever done any repairs on this building and where the money would normally come from, but it's not the Norcross House, which I know is separate. The way I understand this is this is the town-owned building, just like the Little Red Schoolhouse would be, so.
Steve, you care to comment on that?
I, frankly, it came through because Ken had brought it to me. If it's a town-owned building, we should, it should come out of the town's budget. I agree with Counselor Page on that. And as such, we should, we could make them, we could delay the motion, I guess, or we could modify, amend the motion to take it out of, I guess, free cash would be where we'd get it from.
That being said, I will withdraw my motion. If Marilyn withdraws the second?
I'll withdraw my second, but I also have a question. Can we, can we switch gears in terms of where the money's coming out of, based on how the agenda's written? Can we take it, move it from the trust fund to a reserve transfer? Is that possible? Or do we need to take it out of the trust fund now so that the vendor can get paid, and then pay the trust fund back with another meeting? I mean, you know what I'm trying to say? I'm, I'm not sure that the, that we can do that now. That's what I'm asking.
I think Marilyn's making it through the chair. Marilyn's making a fair point. I think the, the thing that we have to balance is, is by the language of the motion, it's an emergency. So, I'll defer to, through the chair, to Steve, how he feels is the best way to handle it, is take it out of it and have a future motion of taking free cash back in historical? Or does that just convolute things? But it seems to be time-sensitive based on the, the verbiage.
Through the chair, I, since we're here now with this motion, I would say vote the motion now, and then next month, we'll have it on the agenda to take the money out of free cash and put it back to the Historical Trust.
Okay, with that being said, then I will re-instate my original motion to approve $709 from the Historical Trust Funds for emergency service repairs to the furnace at the Historical Commission Headquarters, with the understanding that at the next meeting, we will entertain a additional motion of replenishing that $709 into the Historical Trust Fund with free cash.
And I'll second that again.
Any further discussion? We have a plan. I'm a yes on that. Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Steve, if you want to continue now for discussion purposes? On the post-employment benefits?
Before we do the discussion on the two items, Counselor, we, I think the appropriation of the $1 million is, is that, am I, so we were requesting an appropriation of $1 million out of free cash to add, to make a contribution to the OPEB trust this year, in addition to the budgeted $50,000 that we had budgeted from, for FY22.
Has anyone seen that on the, on our agenda?
Yes.
The agenda's been revised a couple of times, and I want to make sure we're all working off the same document.
It's there.
It's there.
Yep.
It's number, it's sub-number one.
Okay, I think, I think what's happened, my documents were printed in the Town Hall, so it's missing off of mine. So, let's, let's back up, and if someone could make that motion, we'll get that finished.
I move to approve the appropriation of $1 million from free cash to the other post-employment benefits trust fund.
Second.
Thanks. Motion and a second, any further discussion? I would just add, I had a link, very lengthy conversation with Steve about the allocation of those funds coming out of free cash. We have approximately 5.6 in free cash right now. If there were any other emergency orders coming down the pike, it still would leave us with 4.6, and it makes total sense. So, I'm in favor if there is no other questions, and I'm not seeing any, I'll start the voting with myself, and I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Steve?
Okay, continuing our fun-filled discussion on OPEB trust. The, the next two items are more discussion, right now, to get, to get it on the table to make us aware of things. One of them is, and the first one is to take a percentage, I have 2% in the original here, of free cash, certified free cash each year, and put that automatically into the OPEB trust fund before anything else, right off, as soon as it's certified, you put 2% of whatever that number was into the OPEB trust. The second then is down the road, but right now, the, the reasoning with both of them, actually, and I'll get into the second one shortly, is that it shows a plan, as stated in the ratings review that Standard and Poor's put out, it's a credit weakness that they don't feel that we have a plan. They appreciate the fact that we put it in as part of the budget every year, but honestly, it could get voted off the budget too, if we needed to. Something like this will not go at each individual year's budget, it'll be based on the free cash from the previous year, and it shows a consistency, and it'll go in every year. Now, if it's, if, God forbid, we have no free cash or negative free cash, obviously it wouldn't go in, but it shows intent, and it shows the willingness to set something down so that it does, that we do make contributions every year to the trust fund. The, go on with the other, the second item is, and this was recommended by our actuarial firm, they said that a lot of towns, what they do is, they plan on our annual retirement budget that we make to Hampton County Retirement each year, that's part of the budget. I think this past year, it was about $4.5 million, and you take a percentage of that, once the retirement is fully funded. So, currently Hampton County's funded at 50%. When that hit 100%, you would take what, a portion of that, and in this case, 50% of it, and put it into the OPEB. Again, it's minimal impact on the budget in that you're planning on doing, say, 4 million every year, you're now putting 2 million in, and it enables us to further get traction towards the 100% funded of the OPEB. And again, the ratings agency looked on it extraordinarily favorably, saying, okay, you have a plan in place, you're doing what you can do.
So, Mike? So, Steve, I'm not quite sure I understand that. So, through the Hampton County Retirement, we have a certain amount of money, you said roughly 4.5 million that we pay into that.
Right.
So, we're at, what, 50% funded right now? So, so how much more do we have to put in to get it 100% funded?
The, it's much like the OPEB trust, Counselor, Hampton County, I'd have to find out from them, but they're, right now, this county system, which we're a part of, is 50% funded. It's not Eastlaw Meadow, that's 50% funded, it's the entire system. So, depending on how many people go in, retirement, all the stuff they use to calculate, they, and they also do an actuarial review every couple of years to determine discount rates, and pretty much the same thing the way we do it with OPEB. And that, depending on that, it changes in how the market does. So, it, but by law, we're supposed to, I believe, be fully funded by 2037. So, that, that's kind of the time I'd use to start thinking, when this would take effect, it wouldn't be till 2037.
Wow.
Give or take, you know? Now that confused you even more. The point.
I'm simply thinking that I probably won't be a counselor by 2037.
So, it's an easy vote. But no, they, in honesty, what the point is, what they're trying to say is that you have a set budget amount for your retirement every year. When that's no longer needed, take that same money and put it towards OPEB, because the OPEB's not going away. And as you say, we probably won't get to 100% of that. So, once you have that, take that same block, it's basically neutral at that point, and put it into the OPEB trust, and you're reducing it down to the ultimate goal of being 100% fully funded.
I'll get right to you, Marilyn. Kathy, I saw your hand.
Well, I understand the concept, Steve, but I'm just, I appreciate that 2037 is a, is kind of like the bookend date, but do we, can we legally make a financial vote for something where that's still 15 years out? Are we able to do that legally, to start making decisions about how much we might fund a particular entity without having, and no one would have anywhere a clue about what the financial status of the town will be in 2037?
I think legally you can, because, and I'm not a lawyer, but legally you can, because you can also, next year, you could.
Rescind it?
Rescind it. So, you know, and it, it's, it's saying that you're planning for the future, is really what you're doing. And if it comes that you're having, the budget isn't financially able to do it, there's a whole set of issues that Counselor Page will be happy he's not on the council at that point in time, and will be, will be in deeper trouble. But I think, I don't think we're heading that way, and I think that we can take it and utilize it.
Marilyn?
So, if I may, the whole purpose of having this discussion is to make it part of a plan, so that.
The auditors are happy.
We know that, they know that we are serious about, you know, honoring our obligations, recognizing that in 15 years, I'll probably be in a nursing home. So, you know, it's, it doesn't matter to me, but the point is, is it because it's part of a plan? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, the plan, it's to show that the town's not ignoring the problem and letting it grow to such a point where it becomes insurmountable. It, again, Counselor Page is absolutely correct. Do I think we'll ever get to maybe 100%? It's going to be a long time. But that being said, if we're showing that we're making movement, which we are now, but now it's formalized, now it's saying we're going to definitely do this each year versus we hope to do this each year. And, and then it can't be taken away for budget constraints or different reasons. There's something going in each year, no matter how much, and the people looking at their, the raider, rating agencies say, okay, they're, they're addressing it, they're not ignoring it, and they're making their payments, and they make, they pay their bills, for lack of a better term, and as a result, they will look favorably upon it versus someone who says, I hope to get it, if I have a couple extra bucks, I'll throw it against, you know, against it, and there, there's no definitiveness about that.
Got it.
So, Mike, if I can follow up? The, the plan that we're putting together, Steve, obviously, we're going to vote on it, let's say we vote on it tonight, we agree with it. Who, who's going to know that we voted on it in 14 years from now? I mean, there's a lot of things that I know happened with the Board of Selectmen and all votes and stuff that, heck, a year later, they don't even remember, you know, what the vote was. So, I'm just curious as far as a plan, does it go into our financial reporting and all so that each year it's there? Or is it just a feel-good plan that no one's going to know in 15 years?
Well, each year, when free cash gets certified, for that one in particular, that will be, it'll be brought up each year, and it'll be historically put in. At that point, I mentioned of, you know, when, I guess, when you are fully funded on your retirement, remember we're doing that, but is there anything mechanism that triggers it? Honestly, you know, unless we have it written down somewhere, no. And even if we do have it written down, you know, they may. I think part of it is that each council, as we go forward, will be discussing the OPEB, and it'll be part of it. And if we formalize the plan and have it in, it, then it would be there.
So, Mike, the only thing I would say is, we have a Financial Oversight Committee. I would love to hear what their thoughts are on the 2% and afterwards the 50%, whether they think that's appropriate, whether we should do a little bit more, and I'd love their input on it.
I'm sorry, I would agree, and that's why this was listed. I mean, you see the agenda change a couple of times, that's why it's under discussion, it gives us time. It's not time-sensitive. Steve?
And that's what I want to say, with the percentage, the 2%, when I was developing this, if you will, what, it was designed to, because that's going to be a minimum anyways, and depending on what it is, much like this year, where we have a lot of free, more free cash than maybe we expected, it can, you. It can, you, as a council, the council can always vote in an additional amount. It's just that this will def, two percent would definitely go in or five percent, whatever percentage is deemed appropriate.
So is it fair to say, depending on where we are in free cash in that timeframe, it, we, we could go north of the two percent depending on what the pleasure of the council is at the time?
Right, and we require a vote of the council, say, like we did tonight, saying we want to put a million dollars in in addition to the two percent that is required by these demotion or the, the plan.
We're not, we're not talking about the status of our free cash at this point in time.
Right.
Being a year to follow. Okay, uh, it's our pleasure. We want, uh, we want to send it over to financial oversight?
Yeah.
Yeah, Ralph, you in agreement with that?
I, I would like to, yeah.
I would recommend. I'd recommend that, Mike.
Okay, so we, we don't have to take any action on this, is the way I see it. And that's what we'll do, we'll, we'll push it over to financial oversight. We'll get their opinion on this and then we can revisit this, um, once we have any answer for them. Like, I uh, know that there'll be meeting uh, probably middle of March, so we can address it um, after that. Um, Steve, you have any information on the audit management letter?
Yes, I uh, I included in the packet too, the draft management letter for this year's audit. Uh, if you had a chance to look at it, I can say that I'm very pleased with this uh, management letter. It um, it's not perfect, but we always have room to grow and, but it is pretty good. And um, when the second of your, of findings, if any, is a, more an informational finding, you had a good year. And uh, and even the first finding on the state aid to, for chapter ninety Monday, that's been cleared up and we've uh, are submitting, there was billing issues with one of the vendors and they, Bruce and uh, the DPW, and Tom cleaned that up. And now we're submitting it, so that, that'll be cleared off next year too. So overall, it was a very good year. Again, my, you know, my, the accounting staff and finance did a wonderful job. Um, so I applaud them more than anything else.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Excellent.
And all the participated and bring this information forward. Ralph?
So Steve, when I was looking through this, um, I noticed, um, under other items, there's one comment that says review investment income for the CPA fund. Is that, that the CPA money is in an interest-bearing account and we need to look at it and analyze it? Or what exactly was that?
I, I, I view it as more informational and I'm, I've got to call into Scanlon Associates to just clarify further. But my review of that is that, like any other investment that we do here, that we should be reviewing, where we haven't invested to get the optimal return.
That's what I thought, I just.
Yeah. When they bullet in the, in the finding like that, it's more say, this is something we, we want you to take a look at, but it's not, it's, I don't want to say minor, but it's a minor finding versus a major finding.
I, I thought the report was very good, very beneficial. Um, it looked really good to me. Um, I didn't see anything that jumped out that uh, was a hu, can, huge concern. I uh, enjoyed reading all the government bulletins.
I'll send you a few.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
No, they, I'm, I'm very pleased with this uh, audit report as it stands right now. It um, the town's in good shape and uh, we can only go forward too. It's a, it's a great, it's a great place to be.
Thank you again, Steve, we appreciate your time and effort. Under nine C, uh, town manager cert update. I'm sure everyone here knows exactly where we are at this point in time. But for those viewing in, uh, a while back, this council unanimously, unanimously decided to engage in services from community paradigm. Community paradigm uh, conducted a search and passed us approximately twenty-six resumes of people that they felt were suitable to perform the duties of the town manager. Uh, that uh, was, we created a screening committee after that uh, to look at those twenty-six with the assistance of community paradigm. And it was compressed down to six. Uh, I believe one backed out, which left five. The screening committee then spent, uh, let's just say roughly six hours working through those applicants and knocked the list down to four. The four selected members will be reviewed by this council on this Saturday afternoon between the hours of one and five P M. And sometime between Saturday and the following Monday, at the council's venue, we will vote. Uh, if we find somebody that we feel is the right fit for the town, um, that's all I have on that subject matter. I don't know if there's anything else that we care to add in. Um, if not, then under nine D, new business, we're up to summaries, which are action items for our next meeting. And I would just remind everyone that we will revisit um, nine D for the approval of funds in the historical trust to decide exactly where those funds are going to come out to uh, replace where we voted tonight to attract them from. Other than that, we don't have anything for executive session this evening. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
Don, you're muted.
Sorry about that. And I second that motion.
Thank you, Ralph, and thank you, Don. There any discussion on adjournment? Hearing and seeing none, I will vote to adjourn at uh, seven fifty-two. I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Thank you all for your participation. I look forward to seeing you on Saturday.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, everyone.